We will call the Board of Selectmen's special meeting for order Thursday, March 28, 2013 at 6:30 PM. For the agenda, selectmen will return to their zoning administrator nomination to the Planning Commission for a nominee, appointment of interim zoning administrator. A motion to approve the agenda. Motion, say it. All in favor? Okay. History on voting. Due to the Board's procedural error and the fairness to daytime, I would like to recommend the Board appoint Dave Thomas as interim ZA until the PC selects another nominee. I've been working on a draft letter to the PC in the Board's consideration. Draft letter. These are reference from...
Steve, I think you want to send that petition for us.
Yeah, I got it handled.
Probably be the better thing to do.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. That's it. We need to back that first up. We go back to the original meeting last week where we made the motion to nominate Dave Thomas as ZA because of it being done improperly. So, I mean, a motion to amend that.
A motion amended.
Second?
Second. Is there something to add?
All in favor?
I don't have to vote for it. I can vote for it the first time.
Okay. Again, due to the Board's procedural error and the fairness to daytime, so I would like to recommend the Board appoint Dave Thomas as interim ZA until the PC selects another nominee.
I got a big problem with that. And I'll refer to, a letter was sent up to the Secretary of State. We got a return mail from Mr. Brian Levin. He's a deputy, I guess. And it was in this thing, this person asked a question for definitions to see what had happened and everything else. And under 24 VSA, it's supposed to be nominated by the Planning Commission and appointed by the legislative body. Those are these conditions must be met. Under this statute, if the Planning Commission does not nominate a certain individual for the position, then the select Board cannot consider that individual for appointment. On the other hand, if the Planning Commission unanimously votes to nominate a certain individual, the select Board is not compelled to appoint that individual. Given this stature, the Planning Commission and select Board need to work together. That the Planning Commission nominates someone, that is acceptable for the select Board. I hope this is helpful. This was by Brian Levin. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think we're nominating anybody as far as selectmen. We don't nominate. As far as this Deputy Secretary of State says with this...
If you would, that's fine. You just save me repeating the whole thing because I've also been in contact with the Secretary of State. We have the same reading as you did. And that's why, due to the Board's error, we are sending back a letter back to the PC because we do have the right to. If we don't accept theirs, we send it back and they send us another nomination. That's how that procedure works. It's not a back and forth type situation because I talked to them because we're not going to do this because it would take up time and at this time of the year we have foolish things to do. If this does not work in the favor of the election, we will plan a meeting with the PC. But the first thing of events is, procedure is, is when you reject their nomination, you send back a letter stating that you have done it to this Board, this PC Board. And that's what this meeting is about, procedure. Okay? And obviously... This is similar to what you did three years ago. You basically didn't accept the nomination at that time. You sent it back to the Planning Board. And I don't know just what date I was appointed, but I was appointed for three years. Basically what happens, so you might have a couple of weeks left, is what I'm telling you here anyways, before you have to change who's the zoning administrator. It certainly wasn't appointed in March, and it's not a March appointment. Zoning administrators can be appointed any time of the year if you read the statute for a three-year period of time once they top a slot. So, I don't know when my term up because I didn't write that date down when I was appointed back then. The other thing is, is that in the same that occurred then, I'll make my service available on the temporary position until the select Board and the planning Board come to agreement on who they want to appoint. And one of the reasons why I'm doing that is, is what was just read off to you, there can't be another argument that says you're trying to appoint somebody temporary or otherwise that wasn't recommended by the Board. What I would say is that you do that with the motion that is temporary until it's fulfilled by whoever the Boards agree with. That way, you follow the law. You now have time to work with the planning Board, come up with a name that you wish to have an appoint, and appoint them. And I think at that point, you're not going to have this going back and forth between the Secretary of State, the planning Board, and everyone else and go from there. And the other thing I would urge this Board to do is that when you do remove somebody from the office, please send them a letter. Cindy's still waiting to see if she's going to get a letter for E911. And I never received anything either, so I don't even know if we've been removed officially. Just little things like that and the way you manage things will help you from having legal expense. All I can think back to is the time when Eugene Melville was removed, tried to be removed by a Board when he was still within that three-year window. Don't get yourself in that box. Please, don't. And again, I'm more than willing, if I had to sign something to say it's temporary, I am willing to do that just so you guys can get over this hurdle and keep us out of court. The information I gathered, because I am not totally familiar with this because when you went on last year, it was interim. And in the process of that, I was absent for quite a few meetings. And when I come back, you were still interim on that.
Was I still in it?
Yes.
I thought it was a short time.
Well, I don't remember how long I was actually out at that point, but there was a period of time there. I'm not sure what happened in between because I wasn't there. I did ask the Secretary of State, being that we had voted Dave in as zoning administrator in error, what would be the status of him being interim. So, it wasn't a conflict or a problem in between. And he said there was no problem with that because I didn't understand that.
Did you tell him he wasn't nominated by the Planning Commission?
Of course, he knows that. He might already know it by me, but he obviously got more phone calls than my phone call. And he'd been very busy on the phone with different things.
I'm sure.
So, with that, I get the information from the State because they're certainly wiser at it and have been through it more than we have. So, it was just trying, we made an error, was trying not to make more errors to complicate the error that we already did.
Well, and I agree with you when you made the motion to remove him from what you tried to do because that's clearly in the statute. It wasn't done properly. And what I'm saying is, don't make the same mistake the second time. That's right.
I think it would cause less disruption, unless all we want to do is fight in this town. I think it would cause less disruption to let the zoning administrator who's there continue until this is settled rather than put somebody in and then what do we do? If it isn't agreed upon and by the planning Board, or they send up somebody else and we agree to him, we also stuck another guy in a pickle. And also, he has to resign from the Development Review Board in order to have this job. So, I mean, I think we ought to just cool our heels, talk this over with the planning Board, and come up with a nominee from them and do it according to the statute. I got the whole statute here and it's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. And it's all in black and white. It isn't what I heard from somebody. It's right here, it was written by this Brian Levin, the guy right here.
And the statute is to send it back because we have...
That's fine. That's sending it back, that's fine. But this interim thing would be totally wrong as far as I'm concerned because you're putting a person interim that wasn't sent to us. I mean, we already have a guy and plus, you working on anything right now?
We have to stack the applications right now.
So, if you got 30 days, so now you're going to pick up in the middle, the guy's already working on stuff. This stuff, as far as I'm concerned, if all we want to do is fight and kick each other around in the town, well, then let's proceed your direction. If not, let's let it go and figure out where we're going.
Correction on my direction, not my direction.
Well, that's your direction.
It's not my direction. I don't do the whole vote. Remember that. It's three people do a vote.
I understand.
Apparently you don't.
If I may say something...
Apparently you don't either, Phil.
I was really confused at last month's meeting because first of all, we get these five, six resumes and no advance warning, and we're supposed to make a sound judgment by reading these resumes and we're passing them back and forth. When did these resumes come in?
They come in to the planning Board, the planning Board gets the resumes, and the planning Board interviews the applicants.
Okay.
Then they send one straight to the select Board. That's how it works. And the last time, like when we had a problem three years ago, and it was due to, I complained about it because it was due to advertising. And we sent it back and there was no change. We didn't say, well, geez, we got to have somebody else in there right away. They just, we were sent it back and then we advertised, and as it turned out, we didn't get an applicant we wanted there either. But at least it was done without hot spots one here, one there, whatever. I think that the man's working on stuff already. If you don't finish it in 31 days or whatever, it goes in automatic. That's also in the rule I got back. And also, another thing that really bothered me with this letter this person sent out was asking, you know, if we're going to, what does the planning Board mean? Nothing? I mean, this person asked, what other decisions are they going to make and we're just going to turn it back on or whatever without re-interviewing with them? I think the first thing should be done is to talk to the planning Board. Selectmen who were against their appointment should tell them lying or whatever. That's simple enough.
Procedure is to send back.
I know what the procedure is. Because we did it before, we sent it back. We sent it back, they advertised and everything else, but everything went along. We didn't jump somebody else in there.
We got advertisers, we already got six applicants.
That's right. But that's what I went back for the last time. I know you were injured or whatever, but that's what I went back for. It wasn't, didn't go back because we, I thought that it wasn't right to just put a couple of things in stores. I'd go into a store, if I go into any store, I'd go in and get what I want. I don't go in there to read the voting board. I'm sorry, I just don't.
Somebody did. We got six applicants. So, the question...
There's advertising in the paper also.
Right.
But it wasn't before. That's what we're talking about. It doesn't matter, that's a mess.
No, it doesn't. We got the applicants. The matter is, right now...
But the administrative body is not the one that picks them.
That's right.
We, yes, I know that.
Did you know it before?
Yes, I did.
You did?
Yes.
You should have spoke then.
I voted. Didn't I? Look, I nominated the guy the planning Board put up. And that's the reason I did that.
But did you know...
You haven't listened to me in at least three months, so there's no sense in me trying to tell you anything.
No, I'm not now, you're wrong because you should have spoken if you knew. If you knew we were making an error, why didn't you inform us we were making an error?
I apologize. I was out of town and if I knew that you were going to talk about the zoning administration today, I would have been there like I'm here tonight. I saw the thing in the paper today. That's me, that's why I came. And again, I'm here, I'm here to try and, I don't want you guys to fight. I don't want us to be in the presses some town that's all out of control. I'm here to do one thing, and that's to help you get through this. If it's a short term, it's a short term. You know, I, I'm not here to fight this. It's certainly, you know, I love zoning, don't get me wrong, but I'm not here if it's going to cause the type conflict I'm seeing. I'd rather get through, let you guys go through. Maybe the thing to do is go back and go with the interviews of the six candidates with the planning Board through a second time, have them call him back if that's what you want, or run a second ad, and then make your choices because you've looked at resumes, but you never did an interview with a single candidate. Not one candidate. I've never in my life ever seen anybody hire somebody without going through an interview process. And I've been in the business for 40 years as manager.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt you there because now we're backlogging into something that we don't have the control of. Number one, the statute sets, the PC interviews these people, sends their recommendation to us, ends that first step. Next step, we review. That's where we made our error. We reviewed it, voted...
We reviewed what though?
Well, we reviewed what we had in front of us, candidate nomination.
No, that was not a review, I'm sorry. You know, that was five minutes of reading five resumes. That was not a review.
But we voted to eliminate the reference we got from the PC.
Well, you know, what's the sense in having a planning Board if you're not going to take their recommendation? I mean, if you're going to have all these Boards, whether it's a recreation Board or what, let's face it, none of us here have the time to, that's why you have these Boards, so they can do the research and they can bring the best possible candidate to the table. Why, why wouldn't we take that information? Do we not have trust in, or faith in these other Boards? I mean, if we're not going to have faith in what the planning Board, obviously, I would take their recommendation. They seem to be pretty smart people, I would think, you know?
I don't think it's a question of faith in them. It's a question of why do we have five members on this Board? It's like anything else, it's opinions from people, and this is how you go from one point to another.
If the planning Board didn't hold interviews to nobody, apparently they just looked at it and basically did the same thing we did.
They had interviews.
I had an interview for over half hour with me.
They interviewed all of them, oh yeah.
Very much so. And then they went in executive, like an executive session, had a full discussion about every single person, and then they came out and made a decision based on their interviews and the process they went through, which is what you normally do when you interview people. And then they made a recommendation, and my understanding was that it was basically an honest recommendation that they moved forward to you, the Board, as who to appoint. And it was me, and I'm sure we're trying to hide that, but I do know that I have some confrontational issues with some of the people on this Board. It's one of the reasons why I said I wasn't running. And the bottom line is, is, you know, we can have that confrontation, but just like I said with your shields of the floor, the bottom line is, we have to learn to respect each other, watch what people do and see if it's good for the town or not good for the town, and work on those things, not emotions and hatred for one another. That shouldn't happen.
And we have a problem, and we have, and I'm going to say this and you're not going to like it, but you coming before this Board presenting your case when we have a decision to make, I don't mind the input, but we're trying to make a decision and we're getting ahead of that. Now, if we make a decision and it comes back to that, I think we're ahead of the cart again because we should be doing step by step, sending it back like we should have the other night, waiting for the response from them. Then we know where we're going from that point.
You're missing the point. I agree with that. What I said was, and I am willing to fill in in the interim because they did make the motion to move here. And that's the other thing. I saw you made a motion to remove your, what you had voted on. The thing you're now trying to talk about, which I understood, was to appoint someone in a temporary position. And what I stated was that don't make the same mistake by appointing somebody that the Board has not recommended to you, even in the interim. Appoint someone they have, but do it for a temporary period of time. Make it clear in your minutes in your motion until it's filled.
And I heard what, and so it was, but then we got into the rest of it. So, we need to go back to the interim position.
Well, I'd say something like that. If we send it back last week, like we're supposed to, Milton's still reading his zoning administration. I'd say the people like that, like you said, are temporary, so we get it straightened out. We can sit here all night and pick it back and forth, and we still got to get to the bottom line.
This is where the motion needs to come up now. This is the point where we're at.
All right. I'll put that in the motion. The end of the motion is, we send it back to the Planning Commission. Pete Milton is, as he stated, that three years isn't really up yet.
My second ad motion.
All right. Motion for interim, with Milton. Have a motion, have a second.
Dad.
Have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Makes it even.
Okay, but I don't want to rehash this, but I don't think my question was answered. The Planning Commission got these resumes. When were they delivered into, I don't know, Linda's at your hands, is Steve's at your hands? Who gets them from the Planning Commission?
Came all in one, a simple package to the Board. It just came.
I got them Thursday night.
As soon as permits and everything were done, they had had a previous meeting, I don't know what date, but it was forwarded to the selectmen for the 21st because that was the date that they were given that the Board was going to do their appointments.
Okay. Who decided on that date to make the appointment?
We all decided, I believe it was the beginning of March, we lined up three or four meetings.
Okay, because I just personally...
Appointments were slated for the 21st.
I don't want to see this happen again for my one-year term on the Board where I don't care what Board it is, but like I said, I went home that night scratching my head saying, what just happened? Because we're passing resumes back and forth. I couldn't even tell you the names of these people now. And if I'm going to make any type of intelligent decision, I think at least the selectmen should have a copy of it to take home, read them a week before you're going to make a vote and not pass out resumes at the table and just say, well, candidate one, candidate two, you know? I really think in order to do due diligence to these people who are interested in the position, I think the resumes need to be read, I think they need to be considered, and not at that night when you're doing a vote. That's what I'd like to put into that.
I agree with you, Rich, except unfortunately, it's a major reset.
Well, why couldn't we, why couldn't we have put it off till the next meeting? You know, very simply because, again, I'm the new kid on the block and I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to play catch-up here and figure out...
And what you're saying is correct.
How to get a foothold here. And, you know, when the majority of the townspeople voted for me, I want to serve them correctly. Okay? And I want to make sure that when you get five resumes, it's not just, you know, you just can't make a, I can't make a decision like that. I just can't.
And actually, unfortunately, you're not totally because you're getting the decisions from the PC. Now, it's nice to have more input, and that's where you're going, is ahead of the curve when you're getting. I know a couple of people, I know a couple I don't. And that's where I sway, the direction I sway is because I know the history on the one particular person that I went with. Now, some of the others I didn't, so I backed away from that a little.
Well, I just don't think it was fair to hold candidates off. I can't say...
But even to back it up, even if you decided John Lewis was your best candidate, if that's not what the PC sent for you, it's not going to work.
Which we know, correct.
And I mean, I talked to the Secretary of State about this. Tell him I think this is a very flawed system this way because we get a suggestion from them. Actually, not a suggestion, it's saying, here's your meaning. Now, if you disagree with it, then you go back to them to say, geez, why? We're the legislative body, we should be making this decision, and if we can't make it alone, we make it with a helper. But we should be combining together, and it is not.
Well, I think a lot of that is set up. And I'm not a lawyer or anything else, or even a politician, but I think a lot of that's set up for, the Planning Commission works very closely with the zoning administrator. As far as the selectmen go, all we do is he hands in his, tells us how many permits or whatever is going on, and he works with them boards, as the zoning administrator does, the DRB and the planning Board. So, they should be very tight as far as the planning because this is the way, the town, we got these people that are trying to help us, and they surely ain't getting nothing for it, but they're trying to help us go in a proper direction. And they work with this person all the time. My understanding is.
Let me reiterate a few things so people understand. You're right. That's really what happens is that the planning Board and the zoning administrator works together. The DRB is actually a quasi-judicial board, and if the zoning administrator goes there, all he'd be is a witness like anyone else. He can't tell them what to do. That's their job. The planning Board, you can provide guidance and other things through the process. I've been at this, God, I don't know, 20 years or more. The bottom line is, through that process, this town has won numerous awards for their planning. They've state awards, they've won awards from the regional-type planning commissions, they've won awards for the New England planning, they've won awards for the Vermont planning. The bottom line is, this planning group in this town has really worked hard and done an excellent job, and that whole process when they were doing that was to clean up their environment. The Tanyan was still here, there was, you know, sewer, water, and streams.
We're not arguing what they've done. We're trying to get this position.
But what I'm talking about is, all through that process, your zoning administrator's here today is the one that was working with that process, and those are the sort of things that was discussed. I think there were some good other candidates. There was engineers that applied. I was there, I listened to some of the interviews. I mean, I thought I had some pretty tough running there because there were very good people, people who had done town planning, of course, out of state, but there, I think the advertisement was done right. I think that the right people came and applied. I think the planning Board did do diligence. They worked on this process with the resumes and so forth. I think where the error might have been made is that when a recommendation is sent to the selectmen, you don't send resumes. You send your recommendation because the selectmen don't do interviews. They don't look at resumes. They're given a recommendation and the reason for that recommendation in a letter. That's usually the way the process that occurs.
And zoning.
You know, and how it happened, yeah, because we do, you know, you do interviews...
The zoning that we do the zoning.
Well, that's, again, because of the statutes wants to make sure that planners are working with planners and that things are being done in a proper manner through the town and process because there's more to it than just enforcement of the bylaws. It's a much larger thing than that. Just so you, mainly for Richard.
Thank you.
Think about this here.
With that, the draft letter that I tried to put together to send back for the reason of our three vote, there was three to two vote on that. We apologize for procedural error that occurred on March 21st Board meeting. We will be returning to the Planning Commission and their recommendation for zoning administrator in a request for an alternate nominee based on the following concerns. We are hoping for a new candidate for a fresh start. We feel more follow-up and enforcement of policy would be beneficial, more consistency. Some of our reasons for choosing Dave Thomas rises to longstanding, remember, the DRB and his work knowledge with the zoning bylaws. He has the ability to complete the work objectively and professionally. He has experience in the building trade and he can provide more daytime availability. That was the reasons that we drafted to send back to the PC. And they will, if that's accepted, then they will send back their recommendation. They have a meeting Tuesday evening, so we don't have this linger for six months. They have a meeting Tuesday evening, so we don't have this linger for six months.
I think the word "we" should be changed to "some of the board."
Well, it was a three to two vote, I said that at the beginning, so it's not, that's not a problem, we can put that there. I'm sure they're aware of the vote status.
I don't think that the board should be sending their, their resume of someone. It should be, let the board pick them out, they send it back to us, whoever they want.
According to what I got from that, we voted, the majority of the board, for it.
Well, and that's, that's where, I don't care if you want to blame me or what, but that's where my confusion came in, okay? Because I originally voted a different way. And I thought, oh, well, okay, that, that's a moot point at this point. So now you're bringing up an entirely new candidate that, that was done and over with, and now I'm voting on this, so I'm not even sure my vote was correct. And the vote on Dave Thomas was voted up in error because he was not bought to the board through the proper procedure under 24 VSA. So therefore, it shouldn't have been a vote taken on someone who wasn't recommended. It should have followed the right procedure of sending it back, we get a new person, or whatever, and then we.
But nobody knew this, apparently, because that's what happened. We were right, that's what we said at the beginning, we made the error, so.
I don't see a problem with the board sending back a recommendation, because they saw the resumes. I think, I think the best thing, I wouldn't do it as wordy, but I was, you know, if the majority of the board feels that Dave Thomas was the individual, it's not, not unreasonable to write a letter that basically says, at this time, we have not chosen your recommended candidate, we prefer that you review the applicants again. In our review of the resumes, we found Dave Thomas to be outstanding candidate.
That's basically what we more or less meant here.
Well, you kind of listed more than Nelson's.
Well, I went with what I was told from the Secretary of State, to not make more errors. So we had to send it back with our feelings and what went back. And I'm not going to sit here and say, I don't want to get in a mud-swinging contest, Nelson's done this procedure for years, and I told the Secretary of State the same thing. I don't want this to turn into, well, he didn't do this, or that one did that. That's crap, we get into that again, we're back into this little game playing, throwing money at each other. I don't want that. I want this to go forward, we made an error, we need to go forward with it, correct it. It goes back, the procedure like it should, they will entertain that and send it back to us, and we will have it our following week. And then we can go through this all again and see what we did. So with that, this letter being read, I made a motion to send this back.
I made a motion to send it back.
And the second. Call the vote, all in favor?
I'm going to stand because of the recommendation, I still don't think it was followed the right procedure.
You're out?
Yeah.
Now do I. With that, if there's nothing more before this board on this particular special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?